Can I have a yes no paddle on this? I'm kidding. I hate the yes no bullshit. I just really want everyone out there, if you're a Boulder voter, if anyone ever says yes or no on anything and doesn't add any kind of nuance or context or thoughtfulness around it, never vote for them. Nobody can tell me about neighborhood character. Like I grew up here. So the people saying, oh, if you have too much density for affordable housing, you're changing the neighborhood character. Be like, no, I'm, where do you live? Oh, you live in a, and again, this isn't gonna make me a lot of friends, but you live in a McMansion on North Boulder Park that was built in the last fifteen years. It's millions of dollars. You changed the neighborhood character. My dream would be to do something on the absentee landlords and the property management companies because they have no investment in this community.
Hello Boulder and the wider world. This is the Sharing Boulder Podcast. My name is Philip Ogren and for episode thirty seven, I spoke with Waylon Lewis, who is a Boulder resident that is running for city council this fall. We met at Columbia Cemetery on the hill and talked about a wide variety of subjects, including West Pearl, fire mitigation, biking in Paris, white metal roofs, homelessness, affordable housing and occupancy, among others. I admire Waylon for his unflinching, tell it like it is approach to engaging in candid dialogue that is filled with empathy and good humor. I hope you enjoyed this conversation with Waylon Lewis. Waylon, uh, welcome to Sharing Boulder. Thank you so much for making time today to sit, sit in the cemetery with me here and and be on the podcast. Appreciate it.
So I live near here. This is where I've, you know, come probably zero to fifteen times a day for sixteen years now with my dogs. And uh, yeah, it's a bucolic spot.
Yeah, I'm glad we didn't do this at three AM, uh, but three, you know, uh, middle of the night.
Yeah. And hopefully the sprinklers won't turn on halfway through, although that would make it for good television.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, thanks for having me.
Yeah, you bet. Please introduce yourself and uh, and tell us about, you're running for city council or you're planning to? So uh, yeah, tell us about that.
Yeah, the campaign begins on August eighth at three thirty for me. That's when my signing ceremony is and um, until then I'm planning on running. And I am planning on running. I've been meeting with people nonstop for, I don't know, three or four months now. And it's been heaven. Honestly, it's been probably, I don't anticipate that feeling of heaven to continue. But it's been such a pleasure just to meet with, you know, everyone's sort of on their best, in their best self mode usually, one on one. They don't, they're not speaking to a crowd. They're not speaking for likes on X or whatever the heck it's called.
You don't cancel somebody in a one-on-one conversation necessarily.
And they tend to like, even if they have very extreme points of view, which a lot of our fellow citizens do on various issues. They convey them with personal passion instead of just kinda partisan sort of fixated mind. So it's been fun. Um, I grew up here in Boulder. I was born here. I was born at the hospital we just demolished. For hopefully, you know, I mean, we kinda know how that one went, but for a significant amount of affordable housing and you know, hopefully a mix that uh, makes it a lovely place to go to. Holiday is probably my favorite neighborhood we've created lately. Yeah. For those on podcasts, uh, I'm putting that in bunny ear quotes. You know, where it's vaguely affordable. There's some affordable housing, elderly housing, co-housing. I was there visiting my friend Ryan Van Duser the other day and he had just bought his home, his like dream house, you know? And it's still, it's not affordable up there, but it's, it was a small enough building that he could buy his own standalone house with a garage for his thirty-six bikes, you know? And my bike, uh, dog cart in the back of wheel fell off. And within one minute, I swear to God, there were like five neighbors out there, including with a toolkit. And that's what we want. We want like kindness and neighbor, you know, resiliency for tough times like pandemics or, you know, crazy elections.
Or uh, flat tires or whatever.
Yeah, daily life. That's the blue zone thing, you know, organic, kind community. And so, yeah, I mean, I care about every issue. I think you should and you kinda have to if you wanna serve on, on city council. You can't, I guess you can focus on issues and that's healthy, but you need to care. And I feel like our city is in some cases through no fault of its own, there's larger forces at play that have also hit other cities and towns. But we're having a rough time. I don't think we've had a lot of W's in the last ten or fifteen years. You know, I think this is the first time where I felt like I can run time-wise, energy-wise. You know, I started Elephant Journal here, became a very big website, independent website around mindfulness and all kinds of issues again. You know, abortion rights and smoothie recipes and, you know, activism and family and biking and everything all over the map.
That's your main career thing is, is launching that and um, getting that up, getting that up and going.
Yeah, I mean, that thing got really big. Uh, we had more than thirty million readers at a certain point. We've declined precipitously along with a lot of media because of the Facebook algorithm. Facebook now Meta bought its biggest competitor Instagram where there's almost no links. So social media has become all about itself instead of as a kind of a clearinghouse or a, or a commons for uh, journalism and media and community. But yeah, no, that's been really fun and successful in my way to sort of contribute. You know, and we've always been mission driven. We never sold out to the man. We had a lot of offers and but with the decline of Elephant, um, I'm still gonna be running it full-time. Uh, still have a great staff, but we had a rough year last year, laid off twenty people. I went from like, yeah, people had worked for me for eight, ten years. It was, talk about losing, it was painful, but we did it with transparency. We did it with kindness as much as we could and, and didn't have, I don't think we had much bad blood if any and um, at the end of that, I went from like four meetings a day historically last seven years to like one meeting a week. So suddenly I was like, wow, I have a like spacious.
Let's run for city council.
Life. How could I ruin it? You know, by serving the city I adore and has given me so much, including made Elephant happen. You know, the community, Naturally Boulder, all that. I won Entrepreneur of the Year along with some others in two thousand and seven at Naturally Boulder to give you an idea. Like it's been, I go way back. So we started in two thousand and two.
Two thousand and seven is the year I moved into town and uh,
Welcome belatedly.
I appreciate you mentioning your, the meetings with so many people and how that's encouraging to you. Like I, uh, I take a lot of um, motivation from the fact that there are so many people in this town thinking critically about how to solve our big problems and really caring and engaging and reading and, you know, like.
I don't know if they're thinking about how to solve the big problems, but they're thinking about how to make Boulder what they want it to be.
Sure.
And I think one of the reasons I'm running, and I don't mean to interject too much.
Yeah, no, it's your interview.
Is I don't actually find that many people focused on solutions. I think people are focused on what they want their Boulder to be. It's become very territorial.
Interesting.
And a lot of like, I think toxicity is sort of over a word that's too easily used.
Yeah.
Uh, like a lot of name-calling, it's used too casually, but I do think there's a fair amount of rigid, fixated opposition in this town.
Yeah.
And if you pull back like, you know, twenty thousand feet, let alone two yards, you'd be like, okay, everyone here is hopefully, you know, maybe not voting for Trump or fascism. Hopefully we regard climate crisis as real, equal rights, if not equity is fundamental.
Yeah.
Like, do we really have to hate each other?
Right.
There are people who will not talk to each other in Boulder.
Yeah, over issues around land use, I suppose.
Over like West Pearl.
Yeah, right.
Being a parking lot or being a vibrant town square, as I would, as I always put, as I would put that choice.
Yeah, you uh, you really didn't lay your card on the table there.
No, but I mean, Dave Query is a friend of mine. I met with him like a week or two ago and he hated me on that issue and I, I didn't hate him on that issue. I wanted to triangulate and try to make him and others happy. He's a stakeholder. We want vibrant restaurants and retail and local shops. We don't want Amazon to own Boulder.
Yeah, right.
With Whole Foods and trucks leeching every neighborhood as I view them.
Yeah, my, my view of West Pearl is um, yeah, a couple of extra blocks, that would be great, but I'd love a square mile of resident, of a pedestrian district downtown, you know?
Conversation over. Done. Yeah, Dave and a lot of people are like, dude, it's two blocks. What are you obsessed about? And you're like, it's the symbolic heart of Boulder. Go to Florence, go to wherever, any like.
Why can't we have nice things?
Any city develops pre-cars and the town square is fundamental. The mall is packed. I know there's issues with it, but it is packed. I mean, it is well-used.
And it's a really energetic, motivating place. You go there and you feel better and you see people, you, you like have conversations. I mean, I don't know what your experience is on the mall, but I show up there and like I start talking to people, you know?
Yeah. For a hundred years I was like, I never was in the mall as much as you would think if you know me. A lot of people call me mayor of Boulder in a casual way and I would always say, yeah, it's the ideal kind of mayorship where I don't actually do any work whatsoever. I just know everyone, but I'm on Pearl Street all the time, but I would never go on the mall because they ban dogs and they ban bikes and I'm always with one or both. But over the last years, you know, obviously through the years, you spend time on the mall and last, since the pandemic, for whatever reason, they stopped enforcing dogs. So now I'm there all the time.
Okay, cool.
Yeah, and he's never gone to the bathroom once on the mall.
Nice work.
Yeah.
Winnie.
I mean, on the mall.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So uh, yeah, maybe let's um, let's talk about some of the things you kinda care about most. What's kinda buzzing around in your brain today? Uh, um, why you're running for city council? My favorite thing to do is talk about housing, but we can talk about whatever um, is of interest to you.
Well, um, there's like problems that I think need addressing that are urgent.
Yep.
And there's also opportunities and fun stuff, which I feel like people forget to talk about because you always focus on the itch or the the scratch or the cut on the corporeal body of a community instead of saying appreciating stuff. Like I was just playing with my dog and some other puppies at Scott Carpenter. And with like four other young people I've seen there before and I was like, hey, you know, I'm kinda getting into city council mode. And I was like, hey, you guys live here, you know, you rent, what's your experience? What do you love? What do you not love? And they had nothing they didn't love. They were like, Boulder is heaven.
It's really amazing.
These were young people and as we kept talking, they said, okay, there's, you know, rent is high, but we knew it was gonna be high. And they live in the new sort of transit village area.
Okay.
Near Zeal basically, not on the the north side of Pearl, on the south side, but you know, near like the spot climbing gym.
Right, right.
And then they said, and the lack of diversity. And, and we talked about, you know, I grew up here, half my friends were Latino in, in school where it was less siloed, at least at the time, at KC particularly. And um, I said, yeah, you know, we definitely are not diverse. It's like eighty-eight percent white, which does include Jewish. And as a half-Jew, I don't always love Jews being lumped in with white because that's a complex topic and a rabbit hole, but you know, we have passing privilege, but certainly antisemitism is alive and well or not well in the US.
Yeah, right.
So, but the Latino community is incredibly strong and a huge part of our community. We're just so siloed. Um, because of issues around, you know, culture, which is wonderful and understandable and class or affordability or transportation or housing. So, yeah, housing is, is a huge one. I'm happy to talk about that. I'd more likely I'd wanna listen to you about it because I'm learning, but.
Well, um, let's, I, I love the, the notion of talking about um, what, what we love about Boulder and like the vision for what it could be. You know, we, uh, you just brushed on, we just, we just touched on the notion of what, what it would take to, to be a world-class city. Um, I, I spoke with Bob Yates on a, on a recent episode and he had just come back from Budapest, which has a UNESCO World Heritage Site there down in the, in the middle, the city center. How could we, how could we have that? You know, I wanna, I wanna live near a world, a world heritage site where we have really cool density and uh, like, you know, really um, vibrant, interactive, you know, uh, walkable blocks, districts, you know?
I think this is what we need to talk about more is not just the problems which are vital to get to solutions, but what do we wanna be? And you know, can we actually address these problems so that people can actually wake up in Boulder and be like, you know what? I feel so privileged to be here and yet it's accessible enough to just about everyone.
Yeah.
And even for those who don't wanna live here or, or can't, there's um, clean, dependable, regular transportation.
Yeah.
Um, cause you know, some people are gonna, like ninety-nine percent of my friends wanna move to Lyons or Longmont right now. And we've, we've done a lot on affordability compared to Colorado Springs and Fort Collins and Denver. And I don't think people acknowledge that or know that. We're at like eight point five percent affordability. You may know better than me. And those cities are all less than one percent, I believe. Is that correct?
Well, um, yeah, I mean, this, this notion of affordability has to do with whether it's designated or not. So I would, I would, I would expect that Colorado Springs has a lot of market rate affordability that we don't have.
Yeah, I think I am talking about designated.
But so, but yeah, actually.
Cause as you know, market rate is market rate. So it's nice as long as you got it, you know? I bought my house with five hundred dollars in my account, no family money.
Amazing.
Um, in two thousand and seven or eight, when they were giving loans away, it was part of the problem, was part of the housing bubble.
You were like a ninja.
Well, I was like, I need to buy now because Brad Feld or whoever had moved to town and I was like, I'm not gonna be able to buy a home in this town. And they were giving loans away. I literally applied for a condo loan. And they were like, you can have up to one point two million. And I was like, why? I have five hundred dollars in my account.
Yeah, they had a, they had a mortgage that was called, uh, one of the nicknames for it was ninja because no income.
Well, I think I probably had that.
No income, no job, something like that.
I had a job.
Yeah.
But I was like, you know, a big mortgage will be awful, but I'll rent out some rooms and I'll, you know, my friend Mark, neighbor Mark is what we all call him. He rented out three rooms, this is like pre-Airbnb and he just made it work and you hustle and, and that's what I did.
Yeah.
And I did go into foreclosure three years in and I got out. You know, I went in that eleventh month process and I didn't quite get to twelve months. But there were sticking stickers on my front door and taking photos of it and it was depressing.
Yeah, it didn't feel good.
It was stressful. I felt like a squatter. And, and I basically was. And then, anyway, uh, I don't know where we were at, but yeah, I mean, I do, so the fun stuff, I think, you know, up near where my mom lives, there's a town called Lunenburg, which is also UNESCO.
Your mom lives in Europe?
In Halifax.
Nova Scotia.
Nova Scotia, Canada. So they, for whatever reason, have UNESCO
Okay.
towns. One is Lunenburg and they, guess what problem they have? Affordability. And guess what problem they have? They have people who are in wild opposition to development, which could be defensible or could not be defensible depending on what they're building, you know, which may or may not include affordability, dedicated affordability.
Yeah, that's a good, that's a good point because you could, you could make this city, um, you know, three times as dense and, and uh, you know, more beautiful downtown and residential pedestrian district and all this kinda sorta thing and uh, it could, it could potentially be more expensive at that point.
I think there's like a hard truth, which I've heard and I don't, I don't capitulate to, but I think people need to hear it, which is something I heard like five years ago from a trusted friend who I won't out on this conversation. But he or she is in politics, in public service and he or she said, we've lost, like affordability is over. Can we improve stuff? Can we, you know, when around the edges, should we give up? Yes, we can make some improvements. No, we shouldn't give up, but it's, that ship has sailed. And I think I don't know of, I mean, I welcome emails, um, waylon@waylonlewis.com, but I don't know of a city that has reversed a lack of affordability. There are examples where they've done some good stuff and we can learn from that. And that's one of my visions for, for serving is look at where other cities have failed, look at where they've succeeded.
Well, I would, I would push back, I would push back that on that in the following way.
God, you'll push back.
Because, because I, I, the, the thing, the thing that I would say is that there is no path to affordability in the city limits that goes through single-family homes, right? Like, like there, you'd have to have a complete collapse in demand and in, in housing for, for single-family homes to to, to tank, you know, for the values to drop enough for, and then of course, at that point, it, the economy is in freefall. They'd probably still be unaffordable anyways. And so, yeah, I think, I think um, the, the model of having a car-dependent city where we have huge tracts of our residential areas, uh, dedicated to single-family zoning is, is, there's, there's no path to affordability with that kind of.
So what is the path?
Well, so I, I would say like, um, let, we have, we're a city handed over to cars. And we have, we have.
And parking lots. People think, oh, cars, what do you mean? Parking lots as well.
Yeah, so.
Do you follow Strong Towns?
I do, yeah.
So they just did this like share of like, did you see the cities like from New York on of the percentage downtown dedicated to parking lots? New York City is one percent. Atlanta is like forty-six percent.
Ouch. Yeah, I assume Phoenix is, is in the mix.
I'm with you on the cars.
So yeah, um, um, I think
You're okay, boo.
The, the unofficial estimate I got from somebody who I, I shouldn't, you know, associate with this statistic because he just threw it out there. But I, I, I believe it because I want to, sort of thing. But, but he, but he or she said, uh, that there was at least five square miles of asphalt in Boulder. And that's twenty percent, right?
And I, as I was saying to Query and others around the West Pearl, I wrote a letter to the editor in the Daily Camera, asphalt heat islands. And you wanna talk about accessibility, which people are using that as a bit of a straw man.
Yeah.
If you're elderly or vulnerable or, you know, a hundred degree days, which we're having more and more of drought, you can't do anything on asphalt. You cannot live a human life on asphalt.
Yeah, that's right.
Unless you're, you know, fighting fire with fire.
Respect to accessibility, like as I grow old, I would like to um, be able to walk around my, my neighborhood to get all the things that I need. When I can't walk anymore, I'd like to be able to, to wheel around my neighborhood. And I don't wanna be stuck in a suburb where.
I would offer to push, help push, but I'm gonna be older. I'm older.
I, I, I'm not sure that's true, but you know.
Just turned forty-nine.
Cool. You're, you're, you're half a year ahead of me.
Hey, wow. Yeah, you're looking good.
Thank you.
So yeah, I mean, I definitely have lots of dreams about like East Boulder and different areas of Boulder in terms of density and affordability built in, baked in.
Yeah.
Cause to me, I don't know about you, but that's like a red line for me. Like, if you're just building for building sake, as you know, with like highways, like talking about bikes and cars, you can build five lanes, six lanes, whatever, the cars will come. Demand, if there is demand, it'll come and you won't necessarily get to affordability just with that building.
Right.
But if you bake in, which we do, affordability and up, up that goal, which we have, then that's exciting.
So.
But is that enough? I'm just, I'm worried it's like too little.
Yeah, so what I, what I'd love to add to our affordability program is, is um, as we add people, we remove cars and we make space for more housing. And as we do that, you know, if you take a, 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 a single-family zoned lot and you increase its value by changing the zoning on it, then there's another opportunity for re, you know, capturing some of the wealth that's created just by fiat by saying your, your land, you can do more stuff with it now. And um, so, because right now what we do is we say, um, developer, if you wanna build something new in one of the few places that you can still develop, we're gonna um, have you tax the people that are gonna buy the market rate things by making you pay us for our affordability program, which, which is fine. It doesn't help the uh, the missing middle perhaps. Maybe it's, it's actually a squeeze on them. But, but this other opportunity.
Well, what you're saying to slow down, if I understand, is we're building luxury condos, which don't help middle-income affordability. We are getting affordable housing funding.
Either funding or a few units.
Two extremes.
Yeah.
I don't think it's helping affordability enough.
Yeah.
And that's not like some hippie siren call saying, you know, let's make it impossible for developers to build. But it is saying like, do we wanna be in a town where like half of America in the world is just run by wealthy people?
Right.
I don't, you know, I made these hats during the Trump era called Make Boulder Weird Again. And you know, it's not an original notion, but you know, there's keep Austin weird, that ship kinda sailed a little bit. Was it Portland weird, Seattle weird? Maybe they've gone too weird. But um, you know, Boulder's been a, a, a rich, culturally rich, you know, community-rich town to grow up in and I, I wanna protect some of that. I think a lot of it's gone away.
Yeah.
Hey, some new stuff has emerged.
And, and to your earlier point about resilience, um, you need, you need all kinds of people to have a resilient community. You can't, you can't just have people in their, in their armchairs writing checks for services. You know, it's like you need.
Well, and that's what Query and like others I've met with in the restaurant industry are saying like, this is no surprise to anyone, but it's good to like be sympathetic.
Yeah.
Not to them necessarily, but to the industries that we, that make our town a town.
Yeah.
Which is they can't hire anyone because, you know, I don't think we're paying enough, which is a problem, but their margins are tight. Um, Winnie, he wants to go play with his dog. Winnie, it's not a charming sound. Dogs won't wanna play with you if you just grow. He's a rescue. Um, and so there's a lot of issues with everything. So we could talk for eight years, but you know, we just touched on minimum wage, tight margins for the owners. Um, can't hire people because they've all moved away for looking for affordability in homes. So you know, single-family homes, yeah, we all, we all kinda knock on them on the progressive side, but you know, we definitely need to build stuff that isn't just dense. It needs to be family-friendly as well. And that can look new urban, like a little common park where everyone can meet up. Okay, Boober.
All right, here comes another.
He's waking up. But I distracted you from, you were talking about single-family, so the sort of, the game plan would be change zoning.
Well, um, yeah, and, and as part of that, like, I guess, I guess the, the thing that's just, it's just a notion in my head and I, I should probably just sit and talk with an expert or, or kind of like.
Well, that's what we all should do.
Quit spitballing about it, but um, I, I feel like there's an opportunity of, you know, the truth is, is that a single-family home all throughout Boulder, I would say are undervalued. And that the evidence of that is that the land is very poorly used from a kind of economic perspective, like, like if you could, if you could actually, if you're allowed to do more with that land.
Yeah.
The market would just go right in and, and make better use of that land.
So you're saying it's kinda like.
There's an, well, there's, so there's an opportunity there as, if, if you're gonna make more stuff available.
Cause we have legalized ADUs.
We have legalized ADUs.
I wanted to make a T-shirt that said like, you know, legalize ADUs or something. It would be a very Boulder T-shirt.
It's like a weed, uh, leaves on it or something.
Weed heart. Cause as I said in Ruckus Caucus, which you were at, the progressives forum or debate. You know, in the eighties, I was living at Twenty First and Mapleton, ramshackle, little single-story Victorian what my mom and dad bought for like nothing at the time. And um, you know, we legalized, not ADUs, what do you call them? Like backyard houses that you could actually subdivide the yard and sell it separately. So it was even more than an ADU.
Nice, like a little, like a little condo-ization.
Hey, let's not bark, growl. That's not nice. So, and the world didn't fall apart. In fact, it helped a lot of people like pay their mortgages and, you know, all that.
Yeah.
Um, I always think there's concerns and I try not to call everyone a nimby or some sort of name right off the bat unless they prove they are one. You know, and I think there are cases where people are being nimby-ish, but um, yeah, are there concerns around noise? We need to make sure that's addressed. Are there concerns around trash or parking, which I think is hyped. Brian Bowen is a friend of mine and he sent me a podcast on parking that despite saying podcast on parking, it was like the most fascinating podcast you'll ever listen to.
Uh, I loved, we could talk about parking all day.
One of the, the bits for people out there is if we had current parking zoning applied to the Empire State Building, there'd be sixty-three square blocks around the Empire State Building that would be parking.
Exactly. Yeah, it's, it's, it's crazy. Um, yeah, so this, this brings me um, to a little thread we almost got started on, maybe before we hit record related to um, New York City being a place where it's crazy to own a car and not, yeah, to own a car and then.
It's a hassle.
Yeah.
It's a hassle to have a car.
Yeah. And in Boulder, it's, it's pretty impractical. Yeah, and in Boulder, it's it's pretty impractical, but um. We happen to be a couple of people who uh, live without cars and it's. It, I don't know how you make it work, I I make it work, I got an e-bike and it's, it's really fun, I like.
Never had an e-bike until like a year or two ago, um. And never needed it. Having the e-bike, which I have right here, it makes it easy to pull this guy around. Cause he's a puppy, can't run that much.
Yeah.
Makes it easy to haul. I mean, honestly, I put thousands of pounds of groceries, a little bit of hyperbole, on my old bikes, no problem with a couple peneers, you know? I mean, is, we've done a gr- a beautiful UNESCO level job of making. Bike living possible, as you and I, I'm sure both heartily agree, especially, let me jump in before you go there. If, especially if we had a beer involved, we'd say, we have not improved. Biking infrastructure beyond hardcore cyclists, like my next door neighbors. Three kids, they would never bike around Boulder, ever. They have two hulking SUVs or a truck, respect, not trying to diss you guys.
Yeah.
But, you know, it's comfortable for people like you and me who are willing to like negotiate. Crazy traffic and texting drivers, but we need protected bike lanes.
Absolutely.
Is that what you were gonna say?
No, well, I was, uh, I was gonna say something more general than that.
Oh, I thought you were gonna be like, our biking infrastructure is not good.
I love protected bike lanes and yeah, I I definitely want to double down on more and better and.
Double down.
Uh, the um, but the thing I want to point out is that if you live your life on a bike, you realize pretty quickly you are second class citizen to to cars.
Hundred percent.
So like, if if the, if this is what, if this is the best North America can do, I'm a little depressed.
This is pretty much the best we can do, and I think we claim that five percent of people bike on a daily basis. In Amsterdam or whatever, they have rates that are thirty, fifty, sixty, even higher percent. And they're constantly making changes every year that are huge, like town squares, our Pearl Street, whatever.
And parking technology, you know, you need, you actually need facilities to park all the bikes that they have.
People actually bike, yeah.
And.
One of my favorite issues, which will, I never convince anyone unless they know their bike stuff, which I bet you do. But no one out here will be convinced, is a common refrain, what do we always hear when we're biking around? You probably do, yeah, you do. I don't. People say, you should wear a helmet. And I say, okay, what are you saying when you're saying I should wear a helmet? You're saying, at some point, you or one of your tribe will hit me with your. Huge hulking vehicle.
Yeah.
And I will be injured, my bike will probably be destroyed. But hopefully my head will make it because I'll wear a little thing of foam. Where they actually bike in the world, almost no one wears helmets.
Yeah.
What you should be advocating for, if you care about my safety, is protected bike lanes. That accomplishes two things, one, it gets me out of your way.
Yep.
So you don't have to complain about me, and number two, it takes cars off the road, which is also makes you happy. And then, number three, I live, and then people like the parents next door, the three kids will bike every day.
Yeah, that's right, that's right, I'm I'm totally, I'm totally on board with this. I I I got swayed by this um, following, I think his name is Tom Flood. But but he was on the War on Cars, which is a podcast, I recommend to everyone, uh, it's 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 an awesome podcast. And Strong Towns, uh, put a plug in for that, which we mentioned, um, but. He's he he's always talking about how, you know, we have, we have this, all this car violence. And and we're like, what we want to do is pass out orange vests. And it's like, that's, that's crazy, you know, it's like.
It's very blame the victim. It's like, hey, victim, you should be safer from me, but I'm gonna keep attacking you.
I'm gonna keep doing what I'm doing, you know, my head, my head, I'm, you know, my eyes on my phone and a two, two ton truck, you know?
Yeah, yeah, and there's so many stats, I wrote a blog called To Helmet or Not to Helmet on Elephant, many years ago, I've updated it with like eight thousand studies. But there's more head injuries per user in cars than there are on bikes.
Oh, I love this idea, we'll, we'll.
And yet, no one advocates for helmet use in cars.
Start right here on the, on the podcast right now.
Helmet.
Let's, let's mandate helmets for car.
Cars, there's more, I got more little factoids for you. Cars will drive three inches on average closer to you if you're wearing a helmet.
Whoa, there's there's some measurable effect of of they feel you're.
By far, the thing that makes people safest is not helmets, but more cyclists on the road.
Yeah.
Sadly, helmet use, particularly among women, and I'm not trying to make, I'm not trying to make the gendered comment, this is from polls and studies. Do not wear, want to wear helmets often, you're going to work, you don't want helmet head. And um, so that actually advocating for helmet use actually discourages people from cycling because they don't feel comfortable with the helmets. And again, the most, the thing that makes cyclists the safest is more cyclists on the road.
Kind of work against safety.
So the answer is you should always advocate for helmet use for yourself, but not for others.
Yeah.
That's their choice and they should educate, and honestly, if I'm ever hit by a car, I hope I'm wearing a helmet, I wear it when I mountain bike, road bike, whatever. But and kids should.
Well, so, um.
Anyway.
Something else I bet, something else I bet we uh, feel passionately in agreement on, it has to do with uh. Idling cars and breathing their exhaust.
I've already done an hour of breathing and idling cars today, literally, two different cafes, idling for a half an hour each.
We have a lot of neighbors who uh, who drive through town thinking their exhaust don't stink.
Idling, for those who don't know, it's like, I think it's thirty cigarettes a minute for a small car. No one, no smoker can smoke an entire cigarette in one minute, so that's messed up.
Yeah.
It's already like sixty cigarettes, one small car, if it's a big car, it's like hundred twenty, hundred fifty, truck.
Yeah, some intuition of that about that is if you want to kill yourself, just idle the car in a garage with the door shut, you know, it's like, it's really poison, you know?
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, no, no, I, I mean, I say that around climate change when people are like, climate change doesn't exist. I'm like, okay, so you're totally cool going into a garage and firing up the car. We do have, we have changed tech, car technologies, so it actually is less lethal than it used to be, but no one would argue that, you know?
It's, it's toxic.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, well, so um, we've, we're kind of just spitballing here and going from one subject to the next.
But I do think in defense of that, I think a a city is, if you, if you have, if you're crazy or silly or. Stupid or. Whatever enough to want to serve on city council, you have, you have to care about all of the city and all of the people in it.
Yeah.
So it does involve all issues. Um, I don't think that means you should run around like a chicken with your head cut off, like trying to handle everything. I actually think city council needs to be more focused. The other day, they had like half an hour or forty minutes on. Safety in the creek, and as someone who grew up here, I would say, safety in the creek is important. People don't practice safety in the creek, they don't wear shoes or helmets or whatever, but. Are the nine city councillors the experts who need to weigh in on that? No.
Yeah. You know, we can delegate. Divert that, their attention to go become experts, they're very good at becoming experts in whatever they they need.
Oh, my god, yeah, I was meeting with Mark Wallach and he was like, yeah, shaking his head, it was like, we don't need to be on every, every issue. We're like micromanaging, not trusting the city staff. And at the same time, like pretending we can be experts in half an hour on anything.
Yeah.
And we need to focus on like, there's some urgent issues, Boulder will burn down in the next five, ten, twenty years. Unless we really take it seriously.
So, yeah, that was a issue that you brought up as something you want to talk about fire mitigation, so can you kind of give us a, the landscape of?
Yeah, no pun intended.
Uh, of 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 what you're thinking about with respect to that?
If we didn't have a hundred plus mile per hour winds every year, we might be okay. If we didn't have a drought and climate crisis, we might be okay. Uh, we have both.
Yeah.
So all it takes is a spark, we have plenty of volunteers out there from cigarette smokers to cars to, you know. Wild, you know, campfires, lightning strikes and um. You know, I think they said with the Marshall fires, which burned a thousand homes, for those who aren't aware. Thousand homes in the middle of winter, end of December, right?
Yeah.
It's like right after Christmas.
Year and a half ago.
December thirty first or something. Anyway, dead of winter, we didn't used to have wildfires, this is nuts in the dead of winter.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I think, you know, I have a eight foot, seven foot wooden fence between me and my neighbors, like. I think those need to go the way of wooden shingles on houses, sad, but. And there could be exceptions if it's a historic wooden fence or whatever, but we need carrots and sticks, we need. People like to, we need to help people transition their wooden fences to stone or metal or stucco or whatever. Um, and we need to probably help pay some of that and educate people around it, we need crews going house to house all over. Any, it's not just West Boulder, you know, I've met with some firefighters on this, so I know only enough to be pretty much wrong on everything.
Okay.
But, you know, any area like with the Marshall fires, it could be out east where there's bordering grassland or.
Yeah.
So, yeah, we need to take it seriously so that we have the feeling on a hundred plus mile per hour wind night that, oh, I'm safe.
Yeah.
Otherwise Boulder will, I mean, look at California, it's like our minds are so. What's the word, like mammalian or something, like we're so stuck in our present, we're like, how could this burn down? It could.
Yeah.
And it will, and it has.
We have to have a long view, right? Like, it's not about whether it's gonna burn down in the next ten years or not, I mean, like. Is, do we want it to be a beautiful city a hundred years from now?
Yeah.
And so.
So it's a threat we just need to handle. And I think the toxic smoke is a a threat that hits the vulnerable first, those who have to work outside, those who don't have, you know. Five air purifiers and swamp coolers or whatever from McGuckin, hopefully they're shopping local.
Yeah.
You know, we need, we need to address climate crisis in in every way, uh, from water to. I mean, some on the plan side of things, I think, make a good point, like what can Boulder handle in terms of our water? Um, we do need to have enough water, we need to be more efficient and thoughtful. How many times do you see sprinklers in the middle of day or whatever?
Yeah, well, I heard a a water expert testify at the, at the Capitol when the SB two thirteen was was being.
The beloved two thirteen.
Rest in peace.
I just saw Jared this morning.
Probably not, it probably won't rest in peace, honestly, um, no.
I just saw Jared this morning at brunch, he was just walking by with Marlin.
Um.
Yeah. That bill was uni- universally beloved by all. It was received with open arms.
Well, anyways, he, this, this water expert was saying that, um, you know, a lot of the arguments that you hear about.
Oh, my god.
People and water consumption are on, are. You can actually have more density and use less water because.
Not arguing against that.
Because of the issue with.
But I think you have to address it responsibly, because water use is corrupt, inefficient. You know, we're just so, it's just a resource, we're just happy to waste. We have it literally purified waters, you know, in our toilets, like.
Yeah, yeah, drinking water for our grass, yeah, it's amazing.
Yeah, exactly. So, yeah, um. Where were we? Housing?
I don't know, um, yeah, housing and water.
Oh, you were talking about fire.
Yeah, you were talking about it. I don't, I don't actually don't much, know much about it, it hasn't. That's the first, I think it's the first time it's come up on the podcast.
I think, you know, siding of houses, roofs, roof, roofing is a huge thing for climate crisis and. You know, asphalt roofs have a lot of toxic materials in them that shed over time.
Yeah.
Um, especially with hail and stuff. Um, I got a white metal roof in my attic. With good insulation, a white metal roof is cool, three hundred and sixty days a year.
Nice.
There's five days a year where it's like warm, but it never gets hot. People literally go into my attic and are like, wait, what?
What?
Yeah.
Interesting.
So, you know, we can do a lot of cool stuff.
That's more expensive, but it's, I also assume it it lasts.
Double the price.
It lasts twice as long at least.
It lasts like a hundred years.
Yeah, right.
If it's installed correctly, which mine was pretty good, but.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, white metal roofs should be a thing, you know, whatever, whatever, there's always experts on everything, and I think that's something I'll always say, which. Doesn't do my ego any good, but there are a lot of people smarter and more knowledgeable than me on almost every issue and I. Part of my approach is to like, bring those people in and and respect them and not try to reinvent the wheel because I'm such a genius.
Yeah.
On everything, like Elon Musk style.
Right.
Where I think I'm like God's gift.
Yeah, I would not, I would not vote for Elon Musk for city council.
I wouldn't vote for him on dog catcher. Yeah.
Where do you want to go next?
Um, I mean, you brought up housing, we touched on that, I think, you know, I'd love to learn more from you on your thoughts with zoning and. Density, particularly, particularly around affordability, because I don't really give a crap about Boulder getting bigger and denser. I do give a crap about Boulder um, becoming more accessible and equitable. And if that means denser, which it does, great, but like, I think too often the density, density is such a generic. Can mean anything to anyone, like developers love it and activists love it. I think you should be cynical about a word that can be supported by those two groups.
Right, um, well, of course, I mean, um, developers are gonna respond to. And do whatever they can to make money in the city, and we certainly don't want to just be handing over. Our, our city's character to developers to say, hey, come in and build whatever you want to build.
Well, and I also think developers is a word that's too generic, there's some great developers in town. Who have a history and who care about Boulder, and there's some who are just basically lying. Open face lying to the, to the council about what they'll do affordability wise.
Yeah, well, so my, my thing about housing is that it just sits at the convergence of so many issues related to climate change. Resilience, affordability, um, beauty, um, like, I want to live in a beautiful neighborhood. And I want it to be highly socially connected, I want to walk out my door. And uh, run into people and have conversation and and find out about live entertainment that I didn't know before I walked out the door.
Yeah, and that's kind of holiday neighborhood you're describing, they have a movie in the park, you're like, what? You know, you walk out, people are like, oh, did you know Lucinda's having a yard sale? You know, and now you can buy that thing for twenty bucks that you were gonna go buy new, made in China. Shipped overseas, you know, for a hundred and fifty bucks, like that's community.
That definitely, so, yeah, I I want to see, um, I want to see us give up cars and I want to, so like, I'm not worried about more people in my neighborhood.
Yeah.
I'm worried about more cars in my neighborhood.
Yeah.
And I'm worried about all the, the asphalt being packed with more cars, and I I would love to figure out how to. Crack this nut of how do we go from suburban style sprawl to really cool, compact development that's car light and walkable and.
Well, there's, I think transportation and housing are kind of the same thing.
Absolutely.
And I think there's this like truism I read recently or heard in a podcast or something. That was like, people actually aren't attached to their cars, that's sort of a myth, people are attached to whatever's convenient and affordable.
Yeah.
So if they can, like in Paris, I think, did I mention Mayor Hidalgo in the?
Not yet.
But in the Ruckus Caucus, Winnie, you're not being a good teammate right now. So Mayor Hidalgo, this kick ass like feminist mayor in in Paris, which is a big car city historically, recent history. Said, we're gonna expand bike lanes and blah, 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 blah. So she went in and individual car ownership in five years, you can look it up, the New York Times article, et cetera, widespread coverage, went from eighty five percent to. Like thirty five percent or something like that.
Okay.
Radical change in five years.
That is.
People, and I've spent a fair amount of time in Paris over the last few years, because it was the first time in my life I could afford to travel and. I'm a writer and, you know, the romance of Paris, come on.
Yeah.
All my Parisian friends are like, don't have cars, are like, let's hop on a, what, what do you call them, the velez or whatever.
You're not gonna use a fake French accent?
No. So, you know, we hop on these bikes, the public bikes that are, half of them are trashed, half aren't.
Yeah.
They're abused, but um, and we are zooming all the way across Paris, which is not Boulder, it's a big city.
Yep.
In like literally thirty minutes of joy, and they're electric, you know, so very accessible for most folks. And then they have amazing, you know, I wanted to call it a T because I lived in Boston, but subway and. Other stuff.
Well, and um, I, one of the, one of the. Someone that I've, I've been in touch with a few times, they they cry ableist, you know, you just, all you care about is people who can.
It needs to be comprehensive.
Yeah, but I would say that, um, the people who need to drive, the more people that get out of their cars.
Yeah.
And and leave the streets available for the people who need to drive, it makes it so much better for the drivers.
Yeah.
And so it's not a zero sum, like, we're just taking cars away and making everybody like suffer.
It's also like, we're not at that point where we're like, um, you know. We're not banning cars, we're in a car culture, we're talking about moving from here to there.
Yeah.
No pun intended on transportation.
Totally.
And saying, my point with the bikes in Paris was. People actually want to get across town in the quickest, easiest, most fun, most affordable.
Yeah.
And including their ability or or differing ability way. And if you make it easier with a subway or a bus that's regular, you know, like the hop is amazing, the electric particularly, and. You know, that thing should be staffed up and running every five seconds as far as I'm concerned, and should be free ideally.
New routes.
Yeah, and make it free or have, you know, expand the ecopass or do something magic like mayor, the mayor in Boston, I forget her name. Anyway, she's amazing.
Woo?
Yeah, I think so. I don't, I don't remember, haven't been back to Boston for a few years, but um. Yeah, it's, you know, we're not, we're not getting in the way of anyone getting from here to there. We're just saying maybe you don't need like a four ton truck with the macho wheels and the truck nuts to, you know, drive downtown. To West End.
So you mentioned Plan Boulder, um, I don't really.
I apologize.
No, it's okay.
I'm kidding, that was humor. I'm sorry.
I, I, I actually don't know how you affiliate in terms of, and I don't even know what the, that's what the groups are called anymore, like, um, but, but.
Winnie, watch out.
I guess I don't even know where the question's going, I'm sorry. Um, you're not a Plan Boulder type, uh, who's gonna be endorsed by them?
I mean. I mean, as I said to the Boulder progressives, I wanted their endorsement. I said, I want everyone's endorsement. This is democracy. Last I checked, you want votes.
Right.
You want support. So is Plan Boulder offering me their endorsement? No. Am I on their slate? No. If they said, we will support you, Waylon, I'd be like, heck yes. If they said, we will support you only if you sign a litmus test, which everyone tries to get you to do basically, to always, you know, observe fealty or whatever and, and, and prostrate myself? No.
Yeah.
I'm running as an independent and that's sort of my fourth major issue, which is, I actually, you know, I think with my roots here, hopefully in my, my um, just having roots and friendship and, and some folks knowing me, hopefully I can win without pledging fealty to one slate or another. I do want the support of any slate who will support me.
Yeah.
I'm not being duplicitous here. Plan isn't really talking to me. I don't expect their support, but I would love it.
Yeah.
Same with progressives. I just sat down with them. I wanted their support. And they were like, well, we like you overall, but this was in the follow-up phone call with Eric Bud, Bud. You know, and we hope to work with you if you win, but um, you're not like a square peg in a square hole for us. I think I was like probably one of the next, like if they had more picks, I might've won, but I wasn't one of their top, whatever it is for.
Right, yeah, they've gotta, they've gotta win it down to a, a slate that's the right size.
And that's fine with me, because I think part of the sickness in Boulder is like with the homeless public safety issue, which is the same issue basically. Is everyone's so busy yelling at each other and very few people to solve something hard and by solving, I don't mean make it perfect or go away entirely, but like actually help.
Yeah.
You need execution, you need cooperation. If you read about what homeless, what Houston did with its homelessness. And I'm not saying Houston is the same as Boulder, but they solved homelessness by sixty-five percent. They literally said that our magic sauce was we got all the nonprofits and the government and the groups to talk to each other. That was the only magic we had. And I think that's, we need more of that.
There's some truth in that, right? There's like.
And I think I can bring that in a way people on one slate or the other can't. Sorry.
That's great. Wow, appreciate that.
But sorry, alright.
Uh, yeah, no, I, I think um, I don't know enough about how all the different homeless services work in Boulder, but I do have some intuition that um, better coordination and better just um, understanding this is what we do and this is what you do and that doesn't make us against each other. Um, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, I think everyone hopefully is sort of aligned on a basic, on a basic level, if you like took everyone up in the, you know, to Gold Hill and to do ayahuasca one night. Like everyone in, in, who's concerned about public safety and homelessness.
Everyone, maybe instead of everybody, just take your eight colleagues on city council.
Yeah. But I mean, we also need public support for it and, and city support because it's, it's coordination. Um, you know, everyone would say, look, okay, if public safety is my thing and I like to call homeless people transients or vagrants and I'm like angry at them and I don't wanna spend any tax dollars. Well, then you're probably aligned on, you don't wanna throw millions of dollars more at the police while simultaneously tying the police hands and saying, all you can do is move them around. You're not solving anything. You're just spending more money making the homeless lives worse.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, and the police force, yeah, there's always gonna be room for improvement. Um, and, and what do you call it? Like uh supervision?
Yeah.
Um.
Oversight.
Oversight, thank you. Yeah, we should have an oversight committee. That would be non-controversial in Boulder. Um, wink for the podcasters out there, but um, you know, we could actually take all those millions of dollars where Bobby Yates and some others wanna throw at the police and after already throwing more and say, let's, I think the shelter is a good start. I think the shelter should be located near the night shelter, not far away from it. Um, I think uh, you know, we need transitional housing like many all over the US are talking about. Because basically if you're gonna pay the police to do a thankless job, to in many cases ruin already tenuous lives.
Yeah, right.
You're just paying to move them and make their lives worse, which is not good for anyone. When your life is worse, you become more desperate. Mental health wise, daily safety wise. So we need transitional housing where all the services can go. And it does need to be in a safe location that hopefully is safe for the neighbors.
Everything you've said to me sounds like uh something that Boulder progressives would agree with. Was this an issue that there was, that there was?
I'm just super passionate about it and to me it's emblematic of the two sides or there's eighteen different sides, but the two sides can't talk to each other about it. Therefore, we don't make progress on it unless you win. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
The only way we can make progress in Boulder, and I'm not meaning that in the progressive sense, just progress on any problem or, or hope. It could be a UNESCO positive thing or it could be a negative problem thing.
Yeah.
Um, the only way we're making progress is by winning five to three in council or, you know, five to four or whatever. And, but we should be able to actually come together and say, look, public safety is intimately related to homelessness. And all public safety concerns are not illegitimate.
Yeah.
There are legitimate public safety concerns, also for the homeless population.
Totally.
Like seventy-five percent of homeless women are retostat, get sexually assaulted at some point. Like it's not, the status quo is not good for anyone.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's where I was saying the ayahuasca thing, like on a fundamental level, I think people can agree actually, like, oh, we can address public safety by actually giving the homeless folks who want it a place to go that's safe and independent. Get them some services, help them out with mental health sandwiches, you know, um, their own safety. And then hopefully transition them to job, jobs and housing.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's like, then you're helping people's lives. That's a pretty good thing. That's why I supported attention homes. Like that's together. That's like the best thing in the world if you can help someone's life.
Absolutely. Yeah, this came up in the last interview with Nicole Spear of the, of, you know, the number one predictor of adult homelessness is childhood homelessness. So giving these teens uh, uh, an anchor, you know, and, and a place to live, it's, it's, it's trajectory changing for them.
A hundred percent, yeah.
Well, I, I um, thanks for tackling that subject. Um, it's um, it's definitely a polarizing one and I actually, everything you said makes sense and, and honestly, like, I talked to lots of people about this subject and for me, I don't feel like I'm an expert and I'm still trying to wrap my head on it, around it. Lots of things that people say on this subject make sense to me and um, uh, why there's a lot of yelling and division about it. That also makes sense to me, I guess, be- because it's, it's like such an emotional, we all have the emotional response to uh seeing encampments or, you know, whatnot.
Well, and we should, I mean, I biked home, as I'm sure you have on wintry nights, seeing homeless folks settling in for the night and you're like, it is freezing and windy. Like if you're not having an emotional response to that, something's wrong.
That's right.
But at the same time, if you then say, you know, homelessness is a right, that's correct on a philosophical level, but on a reality level, like homelessness is not safe for the homeless and it's not, it's a, it's a symptom often that something is off with your community. If you're tolerating um, that level of inequity and lack of safety even for the homeless population.
Yeah.
And I think, you know, this is in an issue where I have opinions. This is an issue where I've studied a fair amount. I've worked on a little and I've met with a tons of, tons of people. And I think, to me, it's not an issue of public safety or homelessness. It's an issue of working together as a city and a public and
Okay, so.
To accomplish some solutions.
Yeah, that's great. So you, you actually did a really nice job of describing some of the problems. What, what are like your top three, four things of how to solve this issue or, or uh make progress on it?
On homelessness?
Yeah.
Well, the transitional housing.
Yeah.
Number one.
Okay.
I think the day shelter is a improvement. I don't think the location is right. Um, because it's so far, like you wake up in way north Boulder.
Yeah.
All of your salute, all of your uh worldly possessions are what? In a couple backpacks, whatever. You can't even have your dog. So the shelter doesn't work for everyone. The shelter is wonderful, but then you have to go all the way to downtown Boulder for the day shelter, which is down here. And then you have to go all the way back? That to me, I don't understand that.
Yeah, I guess.
I don't get it.
The, the, my pushback to that, and I don't know what people, I'm sure thinking.
Well, how are you getting there?
Well, I, I would say for starters that the, 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 the the problem seems flipped to me, like the, the shelter is in way north Boulder.
Sure.
And the, the challenge that anyone homeless has is they gotta, they gotta find their way up there.
Oh, I'm not debating that. I'm just saying, them in wildly different locations is not practical.
I see. It, it, cause it, it just, it just increases the burden for them for moving around.
Yeah, it makes your day, uh, on a, on a hundred degree day or a freezing cold winter day, how do you make that work? I, it's tough. I mean, obviously taking the bus if you can, but anyway, I do think, you know, transitional tents, villages or tiny house village.
Sanction camping?
Yeah.
Would be good or no?
Yeah, that, that's sort of the same thing. Um, where you make it safe. You bring all the services there. People can't have their dogs. Um, you provide the tents so they're winterproof.
Yeah.
They're not like these, some of these flimsy tents. They're, um, you have heaters that aren't flammable. So you don't have the danger of fire killing people.
Yeah, right.
Or lighting Boulder on fire. Um, you know, I think that's kind of magic. I mean, there's always gonna be criticism of everything, but um, you know, as FDR said way back, like try something, try anything, just try, just try to help.
Yeah.
And you know, you learn from all the other cities what they've done.
Yeah, pay, keep your eyes open.
And don't have too broad, broad a brush. Like you could say, oh, Portland, Seattle, they're failures, but within that failure, they've tried some things that have worked.
That's right. I like that. I like that approach.
Yeah.
Thanks for sharing that.
And that way you don't have to, you can literally leave your stuff during the day. You're not traveling around all the time.
If you haven't, a sanctioned campground yet, you can kind of, yeah, um, keep, keep track of your things.
And you know, my argument to the like, there's a lot of people we might call the NIMBYs or the Plan Boulder or whatever, who are like, we don't wanna pay for that crap. Again, even from the police's point of view, this is safer for everyone. It, it, you know, I said to Dave Query, like imagine, imagine if there were sixty-five percent fewer homeless folks trying to live downtown or on the creek. That's good, even from the opposite point of view.
Yeah.
And it's less expensive and that money is being spent on compassion, not on this sort of confused enforcement. Cause we've honestly, like, we've put the police in a weird position where we wanna throw money at them, but we also don't want them to enforce a camping ban. And they're dealing with mental health, you know, it's kind of the worst of all worlds.
Yeah.
And the defund the police movement had a few things right, which is like, mental health should be handled by mental health professionals, maybe with safety of police accompanying them, but you know, the police shouldn't have to handle everything and probably aren't equipped to handle everything from their own point of view. I think our problems are manageable in practice, but if people don't wanna work together, it won't happen. And I think that's what I'm offering. That's my hope. And I don't think it's naive entirely. I'm sure I'll be, I'm sure I'll be discouraged at various points. Yeah, but I think working together isn't, I always say it's not like a kumbaya thing. We don't all have to hug and do ayahuasca in Gold Hill. We need to actually like sit down and say, how can we help? What are your constructive ideas? I'll take those and then we'll put them all together and we'll figure out something that helps. And if that doesn't work, we'll keep what did work and, and try again.
How do you feel about new neighborhoods at like the planning reserve or the airport?
Uh, love it.
Yeah, cool.
I don't love like, I do think, you know, building on open space kind of things, I don't love that. Open space is dedicated, is open space, it's part of the magic of Boulder, but planning reserve, you know, I will make a some friends when I say like where I was born, the hospital, I wish, I do wish there was more affordability on it. I, you know.
At the, at the Aspen.
Alpine Balsam, yeah. And that's been a non-controversial issue everyone agrees on a hundred percent from the beginning. But no, I'm, you know, obviously kidding, like, you know, that is a place where if you could have a bunch of folks living and, and still make it livable and nice for the neighbors and beautiful and some office space and retail and you know, we can do cool things. We actually can.
Absolutely.
And I think, you know, when we just yell at each other, we kind of, we reduce all the cool, fun things down to like the little bit that survives.
I mean, one of the ironies is that the property as it is, looks like a war zone. And so in the years that we've spent trying to debate what is gonna happen, people have had to just spend time living next to this.
Yeah.
Bomb, bashed out, yeah.
Asbestos, like bomb.
And that's, that's part of, that's part of who we are too, is like, what, what are we living with right now? And you know, so all the yelling is kind of like, I feel like prolonged what the cool stuff that could have been built there, but.
But I mean, my goal, I think is like a Boulder boy who grew up here, you know, one of my best friends, Noah and Yeshay lived on North Boulder Park in a little ranch house. It probably costs like thirty thousand bucks. Nobody can tell me about neighborhood character. Like I grew up here. So the people saying, oh, if you have too much density for affordable housing, you're changing the neighborhood character. Be like, no, I'm, where do you live? Oh, you live in a, and again, this isn't gonna make me a lot of friends, but you live in a McMansion on North Boulder Park that was built in the last fifteen years. It's millions of dollars. You changed the neighborhood character.
Yeah.
We want a mix of affordability and by that I include middle income affordability and you know, yeah, some nice fancy homes and apartments and, you know, that's the neighborhood character around North Boulder Park historically.
Yeah.
It wasn't big fancy homes.
Yeah, and the, the zoning actually um, uh, on North Street, just, just to the south of the park is uh, is actually quite dense. Uh, what's possible there is a lot of uh, quadplexes and duplexes and.
Yeah, people have this weird like dystopian picture of like every quadplex is gonna be like eighteen frat boys throwing their keg through my window. And you know, we do address noise complaints. We do need to make sure people feel safe and have quality of life. I, I, that's where I push back on progressives on Twitter sometimes saying like, oh, all these objections are NIMBYs, you know, it's like, yeah, you know, I live on the hill. I deal with crazy parties.
Yeah.
I can tell you stories, you know, of like parties that are out of control, not cool. But we have, I can call the noise complaint, you know, the police, you know. I, the main thing I try to do is meet all my neighbors and get their numbers so I can text them and be like, hey, and ninety-nine percent of the time they're cool. But if you're a little, little old person, I get that you might not feel safe doing that.
You might not, yeah, you might not wanna walk into their house and say, hey, introduce, and I'd like to introduce myself.
But I do have to give these like crazy college kids some credit. Over the years, they have been so respectful and nice, not just to me, but to all the neighbors who are of different ages and sizes and genders and so by, and during the flood, you know, the frat boys and all were walking up and down university with like eighteen shovels helping out. Like there's some good heartedness.
Well, that makes me wanna ask you about occupancy and how you feel like, um, if it's gonna ruin the hill and if uh,
Yeah.
what, what your stance is on like.
Yeah. Can I have a yes, no paddle on this? I'm kidding. I hate the yes, no bullshit. I, I just really want everyone out there, if you're a Boulder voter, if anyone ever says yes or no on anything and doesn't add any kind of nuance or context or, or thoughtfulness around it, never vote for them because they're just going for popularity.
Yes.
Um, occupancy, my, my main answer is, yeah, back in the fifties, I think we had like a limit of six per household. Now we're at three?
Yeah.
Uh, unrelated?
Four in a lot of neighborhoods.
Okay, three and four. So yeah, my basic answer is yes, but there are devils in the details. And if you just say, hey, you know, landlords, I mean, who here like loves the absentee landlords of like the College Hill? Nobody. But if you say to them, oh, you can make more units per building, are they gonna, are they gonna do affordability with that? Lower prices or are they gonna maximize of, you know, what they can make?
That's what I've, um.
So we just need to make sure.
So, so you're an expert on the hill, so this, maybe you can answer this question. The, the, my response has always been, are there really a lot of empty bedrooms? Like I, I, I've always, I've always assumed that the hill in Martin Akers, like what I hear from people that are worried about occupancy is they're like, these neighborhoods are overoccupied. Not, not like, oh, there's a ton of empty bedrooms that are gonna suddenly be filled when occupancy restrictions go down. So do you have a sense that like?
I do.
Occupancy will actually go up?
I think it'll go up a little bit, because I do think you're basically right with your question, which is like, it's sort of like pot, like everyone's already smoking pot, even if it's not legal, that's back in the day. Like people are already putting six people in a house illegally in quotes, even though we don't have those that permitted. But making it safe and legal is important because you need fire exits and you need to drive for affordability. And like next, in the house next to me, not to call out the management company or the landlords or whatever, but um, management company, I don't mind calling them out. Boulder property. They're spo- still spraying with Roundup, which supposedly is illegal.
Oh, gross.
Um, but yeah, I mean, they've gone nuts on occupancy many years and I've been in that house a few times. They had like a sheet hanging. Um, but yeah, I mean, they've gone nuts on occupancy many years and I've been in that house a few times. They had like a sheet hanging on a line in the basement with like one point of egress in the basement. I swear to God, there's black mold in there. Like it is gross and wet and cold down there. So yeah, that didn't feel safe for them because what if there's a fire and they're stuck down there? Like we're responsible as a city for
Yeah.
not thinking about that.
But again, that feels like, um, these are all problems that have occurred while occupancy ordinances have been in place.
No, I'm supportive of expanding occupancy if we can make sure that it's not just like a win, a financial windfall for crappy landlords. If, if we can incentivize landlords and good landlords particularly to build more units and
So are you, okay.
Get prices down a little?
Just to pin you down just a little bit, are you kind of against the ordinance that's gonna be considered next month? We're, we're filming this on, uh, July thirtieth, I think.
What's, what's the ordinance say next, for next month?
Um, it's voting on expanding it to four or five. Um, they're, they're probably gonna go to five unrelated.
But what are the, what are the safety measures for making sure that it's not just a development, you know, financial windfall for landlords? Is there anything in there that would bake in? Oh, this twenty-five hundred dollar house or whatever, five thousand dollar house, the, every rental will go down a hundred dollars. There's nothing in there about that. Nothing. So why would that be good for rent prices? It wouldn't be. It would be good for density, but, but only a little bit to your point that people are already occupying.
I guess, I guess one thing I would say to that is, um, uh, yeah, it's, it's kind of a, it's kind of a rabbit hole, but I opened it, you're right. So, um, the, um, a scenario that I've heard brought up many times is you have a house that has, uh, five bedrooms. This, this is kind of a fictional house and I'm not, I'd, I'd like to know if they exist, honestly. Um, a five bedroom house that you can rent to three people for three thousand dollars. And then if you change it to five unrelated people, now you can relate it, you can rent it to five people for five thousand dollars. And that's somehow a worst case scenario because the landlord is just getting free money and there's no affordability clause. And, and my, my, I have two kinds of responses to that. One is like, you're kind of forgetting that two people are gonna have affordable housing that didn't have it before.
You're arguing with yourself a little bit though, because just a minute ago you said.
But because per person, per person.
Those, people are already occupying those houses at five.
Well, right. I, I actually believe it's kind of a fictional scenario in the first place. So to me, it's kind of like, that, that's my other response is like,
And this connects to the parking too. If you could, if you could, uh, you know, not expand parking for, to five people or whatever.
Yeah.
And somehow have better public transportation infrastructure, because parking is one of the issues that the sort of the NIMBY side of the fence will bring up. They say, oh, there's gonna be two more like wranglers. Let's admit it.
Yeah.
Or huge SUVs.
Yeah, right.
Um, in the, in the alley. I mean, none of this is easy. I think probably on, on the specific bill going forward, I, I don't know enough of the details, but my assumption, I would say I would support it if there's any countermeasures in there around parking, um, around, you know, encouraging biking or whatever, uh, you know, e-bike subsidies, none of that exists for the students. And, and, um, if there's something to discourage landlord from just raising the prices on everyone, which they will do without any. So I don't think that bill sounds super sexy to me.
Okay.
Would I vote for it? Probably. Doesn't sound like a when. Not really. I mean, you know, the sausage is made like in politics, you're not gonna get perfect bills.
Yeah.
Do I think occupancy limits, raising them is important just because people could be burned alive in a basement? I do.
Yeah.
But do I think it's gonna help affordability? Not without the countermeasures. And those countermeasures, I've talked to some experts about it. I'm not an expert.
Yeah.
But like, how do you, how do you incentivize landlords to keep the prices down? That's important.
Yeah.
How do you handle all those wranglers and SUVs? That's important.
Yeah, I had, I, I became aware of a landlord recently who had, uh, rented their house out to, uh, some students and it got completely trashed.
Yeah.
And, um, he, he has a serious incentive now to find someone that, you know, renters that look more like a traditional family perhaps, you know, or just.
Or just older.
Or just older, right, you know, and so, um, uh, yeah, I guess there's different kinds of landlords and the absentee ones that have just always, um, catered to college kids. Um, are gonna be different than this guy who owns this property that's his only rental, you know.
My dream would be to do something on the absentee landlords and the property management companies, because they have no investment in this community.
Yeah.
They trash those houses every semester. The la, the landscaping companies that are hired to come in trash the yards. They're literally cutting down a hundred year old lilac bush. I ran out to stop it. I sent the photos to the landlords who I happen to know. They live in California. They're Apple investors. They're like, oh, why are they cutting down our lilac bush? But they don't care.
Yeah.
And, you know, they get back to me a week or two later.
And the lilac bush is gone? Or did you, did you stop it or?
I stopped half of it.
Half of it.
I literally heard this, and I was like, what are they cutting that would make that sound? And I went outside just because I'm, you know, I've become a paranoid. You know, living next to a col, it's like literally like anything that's not bolted down will get destroyed.
Yeah.
And that includes trees. It used to have all these rose bushes on the west side. They're all cut down by weed whacker. They cut, they weed whacked the rose bushes down. Like they have no commitment to Boulder at all. And that includes Boulder property management and their friends.
This, you know, I've, I've often joked that, you know, when you, when you spray Roundup to kill off the dandelions, it's the, it's the war on flowers.
Yeah.
But I've never heard the war on flowers go to the level where we're just gonna literally like cut down rose bushes.
Landscaping companies, they're like given simple instruction, like cut, just make everything look neat. I don't know what their instruction is.
Yeah.
I literally talk to these guys. I don't vilify them either. I'm like, oh, could you not spray the Roundup because the puppy and the baby and blah? And the landlord is actually doesn't want it, which is true. And they do it anyway, or they stop, but they do it anyway. So.
Well, I want to say thank you to the listeners for, uh, listening to our, our ramblings here in the, in the cemetery.
A lot of rambling, but I am Waylon. You know, Waylon Jennings was the rambling man.
So nice.
Yeah, that was a lot of rambling, but hopefully.
No, I really, I've really enjoyed our conversation. I'm, I'm happy to keep going too. Like I'm, I, if there's a, if you have another subject you want to dive into, I want, I want to be respectful of your time as well.
Yeah.
Is, is, is there anything else you'd like to kind of touch on or, or dive into or do you have a, do you have a, uh, give you an opportunity for a parting shot?
I think we're pretty good. I mean, I feel like, you know, the other thing I maybe bring to the table that others don't is the sort of public facing reputation or personality or, or being that I am, and I hopefully can expand the voting pool and, you know, I'm always a little discouraged. Like Boulder has this amazing group of people on all sides who are obsessed about the politics in this town, as you know.
Yeah.
But then outside of that, like ninety-nine percent of my friends are like, wait, how many people are in council?
Yeah.
Wait, you're running for which? What are you doing? How long is it? You know, people aren't involved. And I really, I think, you know, Bobby Yates with his newsletter, like there's some signs that are healthy. Obviously you can criticize that newsletter for whatever, um, but, you know, we need more public engagement, especially in the absence of the daily camera being a strong paper and I think Boulder Reporting Lab is amazing and Shay does amazing work, but Boulder Beat, but we need more involvement, not less. And I hope to bring that.
Gonna find me a residential pedestrian district where I can gracefully grow older. Gonna spend my remaining years sharing Boulder. Thank you for listening to Sharing Boulder. Please support the podcast by sharing it with your friends and neighbors. You can contact me at linktree.com slash Philip Ogrin, which you can find by duck, duck going, Linktree, Philip Ogrin, or by visiting sharingboulder.us where you can also find show notes and previous episodes. This episode of Sharing Boulder was produced by Philip Ogrin and the music was created by Nathaniel Ogrin and SAC Lunch. Keep sharing Boulder.